We're ready.
Okay. We call budget meeting number two to order. In advance, I'd like to thank the staff for their patience and undoubtedly for their detailed presentation. On behalf of Mayor White, who is traveling to be with family for a memorial service for her brother, I will be standing in today. The mayor has asked that we follow the template she outlined in the last meeting. It was a long procedural discussion and it extended the meeting, but I think we can be much more targeted today. She's asked the presenters to identify their staff needs, their equipment and stock needs, and also to close with critical needs so that we can streamline the discussion. And Mr. Kelly, you have no opening remarks, right? Are we ready to go?
We are ready to go.
Proceed, sir.
Yes, thank you. So what we have for you in front of you today, Fire Department, you'll see we did a sort of a overview of the last meeting and items that came up for discussion. I hope it's in front of all y'all. If you turn to your fire section, it looks like this right here. You got that, Charlie? What's in your book? Do I have a book?
Got an extra one?
Is this your book? I think the books are out of order. This might be yours.
Oh.
This one doesn't.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
I'm good.
It was a C sheet. I'll go out and come back in and see if I do anything.
You're just missing the most vital piece of evidence.
All right.
Mr. Kelly, what page are we on in the Fire Department?
It should be underneath the fire tab, 10-530. Should be the very first sheet. It's a Word document. I'll just hand it to Mr. Martin there.
Staffing is at the top.
Yes, sir. Staff, staffing, new at the top. So what we did is we went back and we broke down all the items that we sort of addressed the other day real quick. So these are items that we can look at. If something isn't selected or we don't do that, these are the items that we take out of the budget. So everything is covered in the budget. We know what to pick up and what to remove if something is deleted. We talked about the capital fire trucks. You see the trucks are broken out, the ladder truck. And these are finance, principal and interest numbers. We talked about $450,000 for a platform truck, finance and interest on that. And then we were talking about getting two KME engines used. So you see what those numbers are on that, just so you can have a reference of what we're discussing. Then we had the QRV response vehicle, $45,000. Then we were talking about the use of ARP funds. And expendable equipment, we have the purchase of the remaining radios, 21 radios at $6,857 apiece. That would come to $144,000. And you look at that, that would lower the operating budget if we use those funds, which we are planning on using those funds. It'll actually decrease the operating budget by 300, I mean, excuse me, $3,348 for this upcoming year's budget. So we are looking at the use of ARP funds where they are practical and where they are allowed for us to be able to utilize them. So that's sort of where we are. If you turn onto the back page or look at the back, there were some questions came up about the not spending all the money or what we had left was a large amount. So we can sort of explain those things out. There's one thing we can't explain. The line item for contracted services, there was $104,000 in that. We believe that, I don't know how we missed up on that one, but that, that should not have been $104,000. If we looked, we went back and looked at the previous years before that, and then we looked at this year's, and we've already lowered that number down to $75,000 for next year. We're looking at the end of year of $62,563. So that'll be ended up around, around about $40,000 differential. So that's a number, that's a number we can't explain. We had the wrong number in the budget and that's what that equals to. Capital outlay, as you remember, we saved $75,000 on the ladder truck. So when you back those numbers out, now we're down to $72,159. We had some radios that got damaged during a fire, so we were able to buy those through insurance instead of having to buy them from Capital Outlays. So that was another savings to us. So at the end of the day, when we finally get down to it, we're about $55,154. That was going to be unaccountable for on our estimates going out to close out the year. The last thing we need to discuss, fire fees. And we need to discuss those because that will relate on our tax rate.
If I may invite my colleagues, if they have questions, to ask them now before we leave this part of the budget for fire.
Also updated the miles. Fire was the only one that didn't have the miles. So in your blue book, now you'll see the miles and the hours for the trucks. I put in the new Spartan ladder truck. We got it delivered this past Friday. I think it was 57,000 miles.
59,000.
59,000 miles. I didn't have that number yesterday when I was putting that in there. So that's the only one that doesn't have the miles on it. But everything else is listed, so you can see the miles and then the hours of operation on the truck.
So I have two questions, Mr. Kelly. First, with respect to the American Rescue Plan, those dollars, I would like to ask the management team to have a discussion of that in the round, the total number of dollars, where they're being allocated, rather than see it in pieces like this. I want to understand what the total aggregate amount was and then how you are recommending we distribute it. So if you would arrange that in the...
You will see that in, I've set up a Fund 51, which is the ARP fund. You'll see that the revenue that we want to get in as well as the breakdown of that money being transferred.
Okay, so we'll see that further in the budget.
I understand the first pass at the ARP money, most of that went to stormwater.
That, that was our thought, but we have not allocated any of those dollars at this point.
So, so this 144 is from the, the first ARP money we got in January?
Yes, sir.
Roughly.
Yeah, it all goes into one account.
Right. And we'll get another one in first of June supposedly.
That's what they're saying. May not get here until July, but whenever it comes, we will deposit that right onto the bank.
Same amount, 1.3?
Yes, sir. But what it is, when you get that money, there are certain ways that you can utilize those funds. And they, like I said last time, they've changed a few of the parameters that we can use it for. We stuck the money in the stormwater, but as you know, we applied for the large grant for stormwater. We find out about that in June as well, hopefully by third week in June. And if we get that, those funds, then we can definitely release those funds back to whatever account that we would like to be able to utilize that within the department.
Gotcha.
But my, my point.
Yes, sir.
And thank you.
Yes, sir.
Bill for following up on that. We need to see the aggregate number and the recommendations from management for dispersment. We have, we've not approved anything yet.
No.
Okay, so this is just a plug number. I want to make that clear to my colleagues. Second question is, there's a huge jump in total fringe benefit costs. Can we just have an explanation for that from, if I'm reading this correctly, $451,000 to $600,000? I'm on the last page of the Budget Summary, Fire Department.
I can talk about some of the group insurance on the, as we discussed last time, Blue Cross Blue Shield. The total increase that the town will pick up for the budget is $220,577. The increase per employee was $125.90. Or an annual increase of $1,510. On an annual basis on the employees that are covered by Blue Cross Blue Shield.
That's health insurance.
Yes, sir.
That's part of that number, not all of it.
That is part of it, correct.
What's the other driver?
In those numbers that you see there, the increase would also include the new employees. And what you talked about earlier, Mr. Kelly, is that, you know, staffing for three fire people, we have to estimate what their benefits would be also.
So it...
So that's in there.
Right, it includes prospective employees which may or may not be there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, fair enough. Just out of curiosity, what is the cost sharing arrangement between employees and the town with respect to health insurance? What's the percentage? Are we...
I know that we offer 80, 20 and 70, 30, but I do not know the percentage. I had to get that from Debbie here at the first break.
I can get that for you. I don't recall.
My next question.
They're paying 80, we're paying 20, or the other way around?
No, that's the plans. There's an 80, 20 and a 70, 30.
Okay.
But what Bill just raised is what I, what I'm seeking as well. So what's the percentage of our cost basis? What's the contribution basis of the employee? And then further, sub-question next, who assigns the employee contribution level? Is that us or is that Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Well, the group, the Blue Cross Blue Shield is set per employee. And that's, that was an increase that they gave to us this year, the 125. As I mentioned the other day, we went to Blue Cross Blue Shield, North Carolina, I think, four years ago because we used to be in another plan and we never knew what it was going to be from year to year. They could hit us with a large spike and to avoid that, the HR person at that time thought it was best that we go with Blue Cross Blue Shield, North Carolina, and it has leveled out. This year was the biggest one that I've seen since we've been here.
Yeah, I, I understand that. But typically, in most medical insurance plans where there's cost sharing, the employer has the right to assign a greater cost share contribution to the employees rather than absorb the hit totally. And that's what I'm trying to understand our, what's driving our cost here and whether we can do anything about it. Obviously, Blue Cross Blue Shield is going to assign whatever rate they choose. Whether we choose to absorb most of that as opposed to passing it on to the employee is a question.
Correct.
Okay, so that, that's why I need those numbers.
I've been ashamed since we went to Blue Cross Blue Shield, whatever that was. And that was the first year it was established. And that's when some other benefits and stuff were longevity and, excuse me, longevity and those things were looked at and some of the other benefits were eliminated at that time as well.
Yeah, well, let me give it to you in the form of a hypothetical. As we discussed at the last meeting, likely that the cost of living adjustment will be seven. The healthcare cost to us, probably worth another 3%. So we were talking about a 10% across the board raise for employees plus merit. It would not be unreasonable at some point if healthcare costs continue to escalate to increase the employee's share of it, right? Rather than have the town constantly absorb it. I'm just trying to understand where we are with the percentages and the numbers.
Understand what you're wanting.
Okay.
I just don't have that number in front of me.
That's fine. But at some point, because this spreads across every department, we need to know that.
Because it's on the League of Municipalities page, it has that as well, referencing other townships.
And it, what we saw was seven, three and like two and a half. It gets up to about 12 and a half percent.
Yes.
Yeah.
And Southport, I think currently they're looking at almost 18. The county just approved theirs, it's about 11 and a half on 12.
New Hanover went really high.
Yeah, Ocean Isles 12, Holden Beach is 12.
Like another example, Mr. Baca, is retirement for the state. The town's piece of that is 12.1%. We had budgeted $129,000 last year and based on the payroll that we have currently in the budget, that number would be $168,000. 401K retirement that the town matches 4%. Again, that's going to base, going up due to these employees being in here.
People are the most important aspect of any organization. And the cost of people, whether it be salary or insurance, bonuses, 401K, is the driver in the budget. All I'm seeking is an understanding of that. I, I get that people are always going to be the, the most expensive item, as it should be. Any other questions?
So I'm still seeing a shortfall in spending of a little over $200,000, right around $200,000. If I look at your revised estimated expense for this fiscal year, is that correct? Is that what I'm seeing? Yet your request for an increase in budget didn't really change that much. So we have $200,000 that we're going to have left over from this year? And would that not reduce the requests for these items? That would be my first question. Second question is, if we approved three new full-time positions, it was mentioned last time that the goal is to slowly eliminate part-time as we move, as we fill full-time job, we take away part-time positions because we still have vacancies under the part-time. So if I do some quick math, if these three full-time positions are, are critical to our operations going forward, if we eliminate it part-time altogether now, we save $73,000. And if the new people, if there's no merit increase this year because we're going to give them perhaps a larger cost of living increase, that's almost another $30,000. You got $102,000 right there coming out, plus the $200,000 carry, that's $300,000 heading into the new year of, of money that's available, not including the conversation that my colleagues just had around the increase in the health insurance cost to the town. I'm still just struggling to understand why we're not finding existing available money to, to meet some of the critical needs and why there's such a, a large request to increase the, the budget. I just don't see it. The numbers just don't, aren't coming to me, so.
As far as eliminating the part-time, as you can see, this year, part-time, we, is $34,998 to date. So we only pay the part-time for the actually time worked. So if we had one or 10, it would be only when that one person worked would be the time. Can adding the three positions eliminate the part-time, I can use the question?
No.
Like I said last time, if we opened up another station and added three people, eliminating three people. Eliminating three people, eliminating part-time staff by adding three people.
It is, is not going to help us. Because like everybody else, we have people that have illness and family illness and call out sick and, you know, and we need to back, they'll take vacation, go, go off-site for training. And there's, it's, it's not just... It's a little more logistically complicated than just eliminating part-time staff by adding just three people. I believe we can do it in the future by adding at least another three. Or when we open up another station, then we can go down to eliminate that because we can have a minimum staffing policy. Right now, I already have a minimum staffing policy that identifies that if two people out of six don't come in for sick or whatever, then one of the people have to stay from the outgoing shift. And it's, it's, again, it's part of their schedule. They see that in advance. They can see that, they can see when their minimum staffing day is, what they, they're accountable for. They can see that a year in advance. They know that if somebody, if we're too short, you know, four months from now, if we're too short on this day, I'm the guy responsible to stay. So it's not a surprise, it's not, it's part of their schedule. They don't get paid for it, of course, unless they are required to stay. But they know what that is. And we can, we can build on that minimum staffing policy if we eliminate part-time in the future. But we can't do it by just adding three people. We're just spinning our wheels at that point.
How many part-time do you have now, chief?
We have 10 positions. We had five, we hired two last week and one this morning, so we're two short.
And three short, for the most part, on full-time?
We are, the lieutenant's process actually went out yesterday. So it's an in-house, so we can't hire until we fill that spot. And then whatever, whoever applied for that, that, that gets it, then that opens up that spot. So we can't fill that spot until we, it's a step process. So once, so, but we're one short on full-time. That's basically what it comes down to. So as soon as we, as soon as we fill that lieutenant, then we can open up that one full-time spot.
So from a long-term basis, I'm going to take up Mr. Martin's question for a minute with your permission, sir. So if we said our long-term goals outside of this budget, perhaps spanning several budgets, including opening a station on the main one, which we know we're going to have to do, is there a point at which we eliminate part-time? And my favorite subject, we eliminate overtime? Or at least substantially reduce it from its current level?
Overtime is scheduled in, it's already in their regular schedule. Because FSLA says you cannot pay a firefighter 24-hour shifts more than 212. People under a normal schedule get overtime after 40 hours, right? So that's 160 hours in a 28-day period. Firefighters don't get overtime until they pass 212 hours. Because they're working an average of 53 hours a week, not 40, okay? In their 24-hour schedule. So when you look at a 28-day rotation, there's 13 of them in a 12 calendar month. There's 13 rotations. They're either working nine 24-hour shifts, which equates to 216 hours. So you've given them four hours of overtime. Or they work a 10-day shift, depending on, on the rotation. And in that case, you're paying them 28 hours overtime. So, but it's already part of their rotating schedule. It's not because they're coming in for an extra shift or because they got, it's part of their normal rotating 24-hour schedule. So can we reduce that? No. I, I, because the other part is if you want to eliminate part-time too, then we get stuck with short staffing and a full-timer has to stay. All they're doing is adding to that overtime. Because now the whole 24-hour shift is overtime, that they're working extra. Which is why part-time is beneficial because we can bring in a part-time and pay them straight pay and let the full-timer go home. And we're not adding to their... Now, when you also take in the fact that these guys take vacation days, at the first day they take off, you're not paying them overtime. They, they, they've used up all those. So now they're not collecting overtime because they haven't passed that 212 hours.
Okay.
So, you know...
I hear your answer. Your answer is no, I need that flexibility. And as much as overtime, from my point of view, managerially, should be avoided, which you absolutely need it. You're saying you absolutely need it. What about the, the day when you go to full staffing? Are you, do you see a day where you're able to eliminate part-time?
Yeah, well...
Trying to find the deficiency here or something.
You mean eliminating part-time?
Okay.
Do I see a day eliminating part-time? Is that your question?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I, I...
That's Mr. Martin's question, actually.
I don't even know, you know, again, we have to look at call volumes. We have to look at statistics. We have to look at numbers. Can I promise you that next year, we can add three more people and eliminate without even waiting for a third station? If we had four people at each station, can we eliminate part-time? Possibly, but not if we go up 300 more calls. And we're already, just from 2020, 2021 and 2022, we have gone up just from January 1st to April 20th. I ran the numbers this morning. And we're up like almost 100 calls from two years ago, just in these four months. So we are not getting slower. We're only getting busier. So I can't, I can't tell you until I have those statistics whether we can eliminate them based on three more full-time positions next year.
Understood. I, I'm not asking for magic. What I'm asking for is a long-term plan that at least reaches for the idea that we'll eliminate part-time, we'll be fully staffed, you know?
I think...
I don't expect it next year. I just think we should, we need to think strategically about these things or we're never going to get there.
No, I absolutely believe that in the direction that we're going, especially with another station and another set, we are absolutely moving towards eliminating part-time, for sure.
Thank you.
It's just a matter of when.
Thank you.
So, so today, you have 10 part-time positions.
Correct.
Even though two remain unfilled. Again, so the other part of that question is, if you're approved to hire three full-time positions for this upcoming fiscal year, how many part-time positions now are eliminated? Because you just said if you could go to six, you're coming close to almost getting rid of all the part-time positions. So three has to eliminate some of these part-time positions out of the budget.
But the three hires are paramedics.
Let me, let me explain something to you about that, though. It doesn't matter whether we have five part-timers or 50 part-timers. The money that you spend on them manually is going to be the same because I'm not using more than one at a time. So it, you understand what I'm saying?
I understand, but there's still money set aside in the budget to cover that cost. So if we build into a budget in the future to cover part-time costs that eventually we don't spend money on, then why did we build it into the budget to begin with? Back to Councilmember Box comment at the first workshop is, we have to be careful not to over-budget.
Right.
Right? Because now we're excessively, you know, trying to set aside money that may result in implications to taxpayers and then we don't spend it. And then we're now, we're underspending, right? And so now we've got this, you know, carryover essentially from the previous year budget.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a very fine line. That's why we say sharpen your pencils and roll up your sleeves. Because assume going forward, you only get the same budget you had last year, how do you make that fit? And if it doesn't fit, then you come and say, this is critical because it doesn't fit into last year's budget, right?
Yeah.
And like I said, I'm already seeing that we didn't make last year's budget, right? There's, we came up short, which is good. I mean, that's good news, right? That we thought we were going to spend more and we ended up spending less. That's not necessarily a bad thing, but it is critical that we factor that into moving forward into a new fiscal year. Because we start with the budget we had last year. We didn't spend all of it. Now we look at what's critical for the upcoming fiscal year and did the shortfall from the previous year cover that? Right? Because if it covers it, you know, if an additional $200,000 covers you for the next fiscal year, then we don't need to, we shouldn't be sitting here looking at an increase of over 20% in the budget for this new fiscal year. Do you see where the math is coming out here?
Yeah, I understand exactly what you're saying. Because we do have to allot a certain amount of money per person, obviously. And we also have to allot a certain amount of money, which is why I think in the direction that we're moving towards eliminating part-time. Because when you, when, when we can eliminate part-time, then you're eliminating gear at $2,000 a set. You're eliminating, you know, obviously the salary itself. You're eliminating uniforms, pants, boots, daily... So I get all that, trust me, I do. So, so it is beneficial to be heading in that direction. But the, but so far, it's, it's very, very hard to gauge part-time because you don't know when people are going to call in sick. You don't know when somebody's going to have a family emergency, especially with COVID. COVID was crazy. COVID just made everything go haywire. I'm still waiting on parts for three years on some trucks. I, I mean, I'm not kidding, it's, it's, it's nuts. So it is very hard to gauge part-time. But I still don't think at this point, because part of the reason that we, we, we sometimes go over budget is because if I have somebody, a part-timer leave, say in September, October, I don't, I don't buy, I'm not going to waste the town's money by getting another part-timer because I'm going into my slow season. So I leave it open and I don't even buy... Because the other thing is that I have to balance, is if I have 10 part-timers, do I even have hours to give them? Because if I don't even have any hours to give them and nobody's taking vacations in December, September, January, there's no training going on usually at those times where our staff is going... So I'll start filling like now. That's why we got two people a couple of weeks ago and one person today. Because now we're going into the busy season. And we're also going into the season where guys want to take vacations in summers. And so I try to work with that. So sometimes when you see those part-time positions open, they're open on purpose. I'm not, I'm not even trying to fill them because I, I barely have enough hours to give the existing five or six guys that we have. So, so I, I try to build up on that in the busy season. And then if we lose somebody in the fall, then, you know, I can go with nine or eight. But I can't in the summer. It, it's very hard to do. So it is rough. I mean, we can look at budgeting, you know, instead of a half a salary per person, we can look at budgeting a third of a salary per person. So we can bring the number down total, but leave the number of people up. I mean, we can be... number down total, but leave the number of people up. I mean, we can be creative that way and see if that works and without losing the number of people. Does that make sense?
It does.
Yes.
So I mean, and I understand we've got a broad spectrum here, right? There are some towns that operate on a pure volunteer firefighter basis, right? So the town is only funding equipment and and every personnel is is a volunteer. And then you have the other extreme where a town has all full time salaried career firefighters on staff, right? And we're somewhere in between because we mix in these these part time resources to help us out. So one could make the argument, is it better for us to continue to the extreme of everybody is a career full time firefighter and and really drive our costs up primarily because of personnel, right? Salaries and wages and benefits are the most expensive budget item for the fire department. Or do we start leaning the other way and actually bring on more part time people and reduce the amount of full time people, right? Because now you're lowering your cost of salaries and wages and benefits. So I understand there's a fine balance there and you're juggling a lot of things. But at the same time, we're trying to establish, you know, within a reasonable limit, what's, you know, responsible to operating efficiently, but yet, you know, bringing value to the taxpayer at the same time. And and I know it's tricky. So and I I hope you can appreciate that I went home and did some more homework and like, okay, well, if we start moving chess pieces around on the board and we can start driving down some of the the future needs in the budget, plus the surplus that we're carrying over, do we meet somewhere closer to the to last year's budget number, right?
Right.
So that's what that's the only objective I'm trying to get to.
And I think if we if we get together and look at the total cost of what the part time actually ran this year, then we might be able to come up with a lower number per person for now going into this year's budget. And because the other thing you have to remember is is that I have like a couple of part timers that are retired firefighters. But then I have other part timers that are working full time for another agency. So I might get 800 hours out of 1,000 hour. I might get 800 from one person and 300 from another because of just the the way their schedules work or their, you know, some of the retired guys like golf, a little more work better than part time anyway. But but the numbers kind of fluctuate. So we can look at the overall number of that budget line item and maybe keep the 10 people, but then just kind of maybe knock it down a little bit per person instead of doing a half a salary, like I said, do a third or something like that and make the total number lower without lowering the people. And next year, we can revisit if we, you know, if we are adding staff, we can revisit the numbers and maybe then we can knock it down to eight or seven as we move into total elimination of them in the future.
All right. In the in the interest of moving on, thank you, Chief. Mr. Kelly, item next?
Um, yes, sir. And I wrote down a few of the things that we just got through discussing. And we'll get back to Mr. Martin about a few of the items. And also the some of the operational expenditure items that we can address and send some information back to y'all. Um, the next thing that we had was fire fees.
What page are you on, Mr. Kelly?
Um, it'd be back to the front verbiage of the word document. Mr. Hatton has some more information that we'll go over. The current amount of the current fire fees is, as you can see, is 1,866,000. Current amount collected to date, we would get one more check coming in from the county. We met the mayor and I and Chris met with the fire committee, I reckon it was called. So we met with them the other day to discuss what the town wanted to do this year. Last year during the meeting, council agreed to do a 20% increase and look at doing a 20% increase this year that we're in front of you with now, and then look at whatever the balance was for the third year. That was their thought then, but they could only establish it one year at a time. So they did a 20% increase last year. So the mayor, during the discussions, excuse me, we came up with a few different scenarios that we had. There's no there's not a it's not like we had 40% left. When you use 20% as a ratio number and those things, it's not an exact number. So basically, we had 53% still left there that we could go up. Excuse me, we had 33%. Sorry. We had 33% that we could go up. So the mayor looked at a 20% increase is what was recommended last year and then to see what the maximum amount would be for this year. And what that is, is fire fees are only charged to the square footage of the structure. It's not charged to the land value and the building value. So what we did is they went ahead and voted on to do the 33% increase and then council can make the decision and then we will take it back to the county commissioners or the fire commission would take it back to them and say, well, the town chose to do 21, 25, 30, whatever the number is going forward. So with a 33% increase, you see the number, it would go to 2,589,799. Using the budget thing that you had in front of you, number wise, if we sit there and we took those out, you would see that what it would end up being was we'd still have to get money from the general fund. It's not something that would balance. And then I'll show you what one penny currently as of this week. As you know, those numbers fluctuate every time the county sends us a number. So right now, a penny is 348,600. You can play around with the math if you want to see what percentage is what. But that's what we brought forward was the mayor and the group voted for the 33% to take to the county to go ahead and maximize the fire fee district or the fire district fee. And it's left to y'all to make that final decision. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Hatton so he can give you more detail.
In our budget right now for fire fees, if we don't do anything, we're looking at 1,953,386, I think Mr. Kelly said there. If we raise it 33%, that would be an amount would go up 673,37 dollars or to a total of 2,539,401. That increase would be a, as Mr. Kelly said, that is only fire fee is only on a structure only, but the equivalent taxes would be .0728. That million, that 2,539,401. And leaving the remainder, general fund would pick up .02 in the fire department. Example of residential and commercial for 2,000 to 2,999 square foot home, currently it's $300. If we go to the 33, it would be $399. 3,000 to 399 square foot is current 450. It would go to 598,50. Commercial, two examples here, less than 5,000. It is presently 300. It would go to 399. And a 5,000 to 10,000 square foot commercial building would go from currently 600 to 798.
Do we collect 100% of those fees?
No, it's based pretty much like we do at the law firm. It's around 98 to 99%.
And the county collects that and sends us the check. What's the most common structure?
Less than 5,000.
What size house do we have the most of?
I'm sorry?
What size house do we have the most of?
1,000 to 1,999 square foot, there are 6,961 units on the island. 2,000 to 2,099, I gave you an example, there's 1,495 of those.
Six.
6,699 is current is 900 and it would go to, I didn't have that one on my sheet, but I'm good. It would go to 1,197.
No, I meant the other way.
Oh. It's presently 300, which is the 1,000 to 1,900 square foot, and it would go to 199.50.
Why would we hesitate to go to 33% increase?
It's that that totally is up to y'all. Fire fees, I mean, directly pays for the fire department. Some places look to look at the fire department as an enterprise fund. What money Chris generates is what money operates. And so right now, you're still subsidizing from general fund to pay those portions that Chris cannot afford. Councilman Box?
Yes. Looking at my notes from last year, you provided comparative numbers. So this 33% would take us virtually to the full cost, correct?
Yes.
Right. How many other communities like us are at the full cost?
Right now, I think they told us there were six.
Six, yeah. In Brunswick County.
I guess what I'm asking for is we consider it if you could give us the comparative data that you gave us last year. That was very helpful. We were way under last year. I suspect now we're probably in the middle, but I don't know that. I'd like to see it.
And we're moving up to the the top sector.
I want to see the numbers. Yeah, okay.
And where we don't know, of course, all the other meetings that are taking place this year, we don't know who else is also requesting to go up.
Yeah, understood. I'll take last year's final results.
Right.
Take a look at it and see where we are.
Yeah.
You are correct. Year before last, we were one of the lowest.
We were. That's why we raised it last year.
Yes, sir.
But before we raise it 33%, I want to see where we fell comparatively. That's all.
No, we have we have that report.
Okay, let's move on then.
Any other questions on fire while Chris is here?
No, I want to thank you for your extended time. Thank you.
So the next we have is recreation department. And if you'll turn to your tabs, it is 10620. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
And today we have Heather.
Not yet.
Hold on a second, Mr. Kelly.
Oh, no, no problem.
What color is it?
What color is it?
What color is it?
Recreation, green, about in the middle. Two down from the fire. Got a paperclip on it.
Good morning, Heather. Thank you. If we can stick to the the template, it'll help us move things along. So staff requests, equipment requests, critical needs. And again, thank you for your patience. I knew you were here last time.
I'll give you a quick little overview. So no personnel being requested in this department. The largest critical need is something that was addressed during the retreat. We'll get to that here in a moment. Basically, what you see in front of you, it shows 131% increase, but that million dollar reserve for rec department is the large item for this thing. There was a item that we had last year. There was $75,000 put in the budget for renovation or repairs to the rec department. Council gave us directions to move forward with that. We had the engineer that came in and gave us the original analysis. He came back in November of 2021, gave us another overview of that, plus a item going forward on what maybe it should look like or could look like. Bathroom expansion and renovation, gymnasium addition, and then renovate the existing building to finish completing it. The bathroom expansions and renovations was something that we were looking at. And during the times that we talked to him with a few other items that they had, they had COVID and a few other things came up with EB. We looked through it and oh, they already had that. I'm sorry.
I was wondering where it was.
Sorry about that, Bill. I thought you already had that.
Yeah.
But basically, a statue engineer, as I said, EB's our engineer. So we had it evaluated. You can see the items, the scope of work and those kind of things, what we're looking at. And then he gave us a drawing. You saw the conceptual drawing during the retreat. Councilman Martin brought in a suggestion saying hopefully we could save the trees and put a roadway in the back and those kind of things, just sort of refresh everyone's memory. You can see what the total came to for engineering and those kind of things was $40,150. When we started talking with EB about that, we started looking at the needs currently that we had. There's no wood here, but luckily, we've had nothing go bad this year. So we've been very fortunate. We did make some repairs going into last year. So I think we were on hold with that right this moment. We will bring this forward to you probably at the next meeting to go ahead and approve the contract to get this moving forward if consensus of the board today is to just say that. And talking through things with EB, when we looked at the larger scope of work that we had, the renovation of the bathrooms, he doesn't he didn't want it to do something that we would be tearing back out in two years if we decided to move on with a larger project. And we agreed with that. And then we were going to look at utilizing $40,000 out of that $75,000 so we could go ahead and get the contract initiated. And then we would have some monies left if something did break or emergency service that we needed to do over the next year and a half till we got to that other date, hopefully. So that was sort of a quick update on the $75,000. Where we stand with that. But we'll be bringing the contract forward at the May meeting so we can move forward if y'all give some kind of consensus at that meeting on how y'all would like to proceed. But like I said, there is no staff request for this, just regular operating expenses, those kind of things. And I'll turn it over to Heather if she has some items she wants to go over. I know Mr. Martin looks at the estimated expenditures. For the last time we talked, we started going back in. We we don't like to stick the encumbered because we may not get that before that. And I've told you I'm spending it and I end up I don't spend it. So that's sort of the, like you said, final line that we sort of have to walk. So those things aren't in there. Don't feel comfortable putting in there because if something happens, I don't spend it. I don't want to come back on the other side. So it's a two, you know, like you said there. But Heather can go over a few things. She has got some other items that she wants to go ahead and spend this year, and she's brought those forward with us today and sort of we can get to where we need to be.
Heather?
Yeah.
Hi, Heather.
Hey, Phil. How's it going?
Fine.
Good. I do have as far as spending for the rest of this year currently in the 620 budget, I have about $25,521 that we will be spending between now and July 1, which would be some improvements to the ocean education center, some new life jackets for safety, some new kayak paddles, seafood festival that we have coming up, and a concert series that doesn't start until May 30th, 31st. So that's where a lot of that expense is coming in the next few months.
On capital outlay on your spreadsheet, 20,000 last year, 65,000 this year, what's going up?
All right. So in your budget, you have a numbers document and then you have a word document. So if you flip to the next page, there's a line item detail that tells you everything that's being purchased in that line item. So you can see the capital expenditures that she has.
It's gonna be on your second page and it's a 5420.
Yeah.
And then also the little handouts that we gave you for the in the blue book, it defines that as well. You can go over the items.
So for the Ford Ranger that we have, the 2005 Ford Ranger, we're hoping to replace that. As Mr. Kelly talked about in the last meeting, we've been going through the weight equipment and the fitness equipment and trying to get everything updated. I think a question last time was asked about the life cycle of fitness equipment. And typically, seven to 10 years for commercial equipment is standard, but with a good maintenance program and being able to get things fixed, if it's not a critical situation, you can actually have those last about 15. And most of ours are from 2002 to 2005. So we have a plan of slowly replacing those. That's where that number comes from. That's that life cycle stationary bike and the new step incumbent bike. The beach wheelchair, that is a service that we offer to visitors and citizens, and it's at no cost, but it's a service that's used regularly. And we were in need of a new wheelchair. And then the four kayaks. And then the four kayaks, that's a part of a three-year replacement plan. This year, we had seven single kayaks. Next year, we're asking for the four tandem. And then the final item, which is the largest item, is really, it comes down to safety. It's for the resurfacing of the pickleball and tennis courts or racket courts. And it's, so the timeline on doing that's about every three to five years. And the last time it was done was two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah, and they have the quote.
Oh, right, and you do have the quote as well for that.
If you'll turn to the USFCR quote, because he defines several alternatives and she can go over some of those.
One oh two, two fifty.
Yes, that would just be to get it resurfaced and painted. The ten thousand nine hundred is the right way crack repair system. So right, that's where it gets down to safety right now on the courts. There are several areas that really aren't safe to just walk on, let alone play an active sport on. So at the very least, we would, for safety reasons, want to do that.
Not being safe meaning there's cracks or just dips or what?
Yes, yes. And where rocks were, they're coming up and there's holes too.
When you go outside, yeah, the way the guy described it is it's cracked over the years and they have two different particles, and some of it floats, some of it doesn't float because it needs to have a water or a leveling agent put in to level these ponding areas because water's ponding. And then it gets underneath the crack and then it makes it worse. But there was two different crack repairs that they came and talked to us about. One of them to us didn't seem like the right alternative. It was a one to two-year fix. We'd rather have something outstanding because we don't want to have to make it a repair just because of the crack. And so that's why you see the right way crack repair system quoted is because we went with the upgrade for crack repair just because of the environment that we're in.
Real quick, is this a rec department cost or is this a parks department cost? Is this for Scott or for Heather?
We stuck it in here. Either way, I mean, it could be a facilities. We put it in general fund administration before. It's now the general fund dollar since the rec people are there contacting her and the friends of the park are contacting her. We stuck it here because she had more direct contact with the individual. But they laid out several options for you. This isn't the, you know, the grand finale one. They wanted to build a stadium there. We didn't talk about a stadium. We tried to be more practical what we were looking at. We talked to him about additional courts, how we could do that and still leave tennis courts. He looked at putting two pickleball on one of the tennis courts so we could have six, excuse me, eight during tournament time. They could have two warm-up courts on the tennis court and then have a tournament on the other six courts. So we talked about doing that. This would just be some additional painting lines on the ground or on the surface. And that way, we could still maintain the four tennis courts. And then when we needed overflow tournament play, we could set up the other two courts and they could have eight for the pickleball. All of them need to be resurfaced and fixed track wise. Doesn't matter if we keep it tennis, pickleball, or whatever the surface is. The basketball court for now can stay. It's not as bad as all. But that probably may be something we look at next year or the year after maybe the basketball court. This does not get it to the professional tournament play that they are wanting.
No. But it keeps our courts workable.
That is that hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital item that you saw.
So the vehicle replacement, which is being requested here, does that meet the standards? And is it part of your vehicle replacement plan that we talked about two years ago where we just had chaos and we finally sorted it out?
And I looked back through that and I'll give it to you at the break. I found it again last night, but a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles or ten years of service. Recreation Department used to get the hand-me-downs from all their departments. This is the last hand-me-down vehicle that we gave her. This was one vehicle that we had on the beach, rust bucket, what we call it. But it's something that needs to be replaced, and it does meet our promise.
Thank you for developing the plan, and let's remain committed to following it so that we're not in the situation we were in for the benefit of the new members where we suddenly needed twenty-five vehicles in one year because, well, no one could explain it. So this is a predictable per policy replacement. I'm fine with that. Mr. Hatton, on a larger question, let me ask a what-if question. So we're approving an engineering contract, and we're setting aside money for a new rec center. What is the timeline on this plan? When are we going to actually see construction activity? Is it three years out, two years out?
Two to three years, is my understanding.
With a similar set aside every year?
Yes, sir.
So that would give you, give you three million, right? If we wanted to build it next year, what would the bond rate be like? Rather than waiting three years and setting aside money periodically? If we bonded this and said, in terms of community welfare, in terms of community demand, in terms of community use, you're talking the rec center.
You were going to build it next year. I would approach the bank, see what kind of funding we could get, what kind of borrowing.
Okay. Can you get a number for me, just out of curiosity? Before Mr. Powell, you know, latches those rates through the roof?
I would say probably, it sounds like probably five percent. I mean, I don't know. We should could predict it.
Just out of...
We would probably get it on a five-year, ten-year, so it wouldn't be quite as painful.
Yeah, we want to spread it out as long as possible. Can you get a rate, just out of curiosity? And the three million figure is based on what? The preliminary sketch?
He came back, it was two point seven, and that was to renovate the existing structure and the gymnasium.
So three gives you a contingency because there surely will be change orders.
I mean, that was just a preliminary sketch that he gave us. We may not want that. Bill, talking with Bill and them, they may want to send part of the Park and Rec Advisory Board to go look at Carolina Beach's new one or to take a look at Rice and Beach's new one. Those kind of things to see what other communities have, to see what they think would fit better for where we are.
Have we applied for any grants on that yet?
We don't. Soon as we have sort of a scope of what we're doing, yes, sir, we can. We have talked to Emily. There's a few things that we'd have to do internally. We haven't done a survey in two years, three years or something, four, sorry. It's been a while, so we'd have to update surveys. Those go a long ways with the point systems. Everything's points. Heather's working on documentation to make sure we have the little steps that we need to to be able to apply to get all the points we can get. But no, it is something that we will seek grants for during that whole process.
And in speaking with Emily, she said fall really is the best time to start the process. So I think I just missed it for this year, but for next year, we are working with her as well as doing the internal...
But that will alleviate some of the pain if we can get some grants.
Well, but keep in mind too, the estimate doesn't include what I call outfit, chairs, decor, things. Those items are not in that number. So anywhere where we can save money, that money would just go towards whatever the outfit is. And that depends on what the final end result is, right? If it's a pure gymnasium, that's going to have one decor cost. If it's some sort of multipurpose or additional facilities for recreation, that may have a different outfit cost. So that'll change as well. Just keep that in mind.
What do you and your board need to be able to go forward to get the architectural design people started?
Your vote? No, we need some kind of conceptual thing that you're wanting to do. The last surveys showed many things.
After the survey?
Right.
We want people, yeah, they wanted indoor track on the top floor. They wanted all kinds of things inside the structure. The swimming pool thing always. In the survey, we're going to have to define a few parameters for the survey. If not, then it would get loaded one-sided, and that's what happened last time.
Yeah, I remember that.
Whatever, I mean, I think Heather's on the right trail. She's looking at other areas what they've done here lately. Some coastal areas may not be exactly what we want too. I mean, and maybe we want something a little bit broader. But it's something that we can address and bring forward. I think the contract with EB is what we have to do to get things started. And then once we get things started, then what council wants to add, do you want it, what you want it to look like at the final theme? Do you want it to be a coastal look? Do you want it to be a brick building? Do you want it to be a whatever? And those kind of things. And then, like he said, he defines what kind of construction. And then we go from there and we start building up the cost.
Well, and I mean, we also, it's important for us to always remember we have a larger community of permanent residents. So I understand, let's go look at other coastal towns and what they're doing. But if they're trying to cater to tourism and visitors with a facility, our facility needs to be more focused on permanent residents because that is the greater percentage of our population.
I think everything we're looking at is more of a permanent thing.
Good, okay.
We're not going to turn it around.
Right. And if you want to see an example of one of those running tracks that's suspended above a general purpose space, that's what UNC Wilmington did a while back. The new extension to their fitness area for the students includes an elevated running track over a multipurpose type room underneath of it. It's really cool, so.
Heather, concert series expenditures, does the concerts pay for themselves?
Yes, through sponsorships and, well, through sponsorships and the vendors.
So the thirty thousand dollar expense, we get that back from the sponsors, so to speak?
Yes.
I'd like to add that Ryan's done an excellent job with that marketing and selling over the last couple of years.
He's amazing. And before, on Monday, last time I talked to him, he'd raised close to thirty thousand already for this concert series that hasn't started yet.
So that all being part of your expenses, though, that, it still costs you a whole lot of money to run your programs. Forty thousand dollars athletic programs, you don't get that money back, do you?
Other than her summer camp programs that's in there, we would, you know, she gets fees for those.
One quick question on the Ford Ranger, and then I'm done. With the addition of more charging stations available within the town limits, is there any consideration of going forward about looking at our localized fleet moving to either a hybrid or a all-electric? I don't even know what the Ford Ranger, I know the F-150 is now all-electric. They have a version that's electric, but I don't know if they're moving that into the Ranger product line yet. Just a question, because I know we are adding charging stations to be more accessible for people. Is that something that we should be looking at with our fleet as we're replacing vehicles? Because I'm assuming this Ford Ranger would stay pretty much within a nine to ten mile radius. It's not going to be used to go on extended trips throughout the region, so.
Manager's meeting we had, webinar we had back in the fall, this was just starting to be a topic, looking at it. Nothing this year, basically, in budgets. Some of the larger towns, yes, they have started going, switching over. Smaller municipalities and things like that, we've discussed it locally, but we haven't took that next step to see about it. A lot of people said, well, you know, most of our vehicles will end up on the beach. Storms and things like that, they'll be driving through this and that. So some other municipalities want a verification on that as well, how these are going to stand up because things do change. And so, no, we haven't officially started to look at. We've discussed it with other municipalities, but it hasn't come forward. And the COG was going to have a discussion about that, but that was put off until next year. So I think it's a topic going forward, but we don't have anything at this time.
Okay. And the only reason, you know, ultimately, the question becomes, is the Ford Ranger truly the optimum asset for Parks and Rec to use? Or if we are going to move in this direction of an electric fleet, is there something available already today that would meet the needs of Parks Recreation that can be purchased to start the electric fleet, right? Like one of those little, you know, connect vans or whatever, like, you know, there's new products coming out, you know, every day from automotive manufacturers. So I just want to make sure, because if we acquire an asset for any department, I know we're talking about Parks Recreation, you know, number one, is it the right asset? You know, do you really need a Ford Ranger? I mean, if you do, that's great. Or if there's a direction we need to move in for the future that we could start looking at today, you know, maybe we should do that. I don't know. But to your point, if the COG is starting to talk about it, you know, I don't know if this is an opportunity for kind of us to set some sort of direction or, you know, do we buy a Ford Ranger? And then, you know, three years from now, we're like, darn, I wish we would have bought, you know, an electric something for... You know what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
And I think next year, probably at the retreat, we're going to talk about switching over, and I think this will solve that, switching over to lease vehicles. They would come in, purchase everything that we've purchased lately. They would purchase those and sell those off when it's time to sell those off. And what they're doing, Enterprise and them, they're looking at electrical market. So they would start phasing our gas out and we would get the next electric. So that, I think corporate-wise, that's what people are looking at. I think that's what the COG is going to present, is to be able to switch over to something like that. So then you would have, you wouldn't need a special mechanic, you wouldn't need special this or special that. It would be vehicles that you would maintain probably, the police department's totally different, but because they have to be dressed out certain ways. But the rest of the vehicles, probably a year and a half, whatever the resale on electric vehicles would be, a year and a half, then they would sell off the vehicles before, you know, while they could still get prime dollar, and then we would get a new vehicle. I think that's probably what we're going to address next year, probably in January, maybe earlier, to go to a lease option, and then that would carry us to where you need to go.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Hatton?
Yes, sir.
Sir? And just looking through the expenses, there's nothing Heather can do about cost of uniforms and insurance and the likes of that. Is there, without being too burdened, can you come up with what kind of income the Parks and Rec has generated? Because like Ryan, thirty thousand dollars for the concerts or maybe even more, and the different fees and the kickball people, I think they pay whatever they pay or whatever.
Yes, sir.
Five dollars, yeah. I was going to sign up till I realized you had to run from first to second, and then I decided I didn't want to play kickball, but...
And get that number.
Okay.
If we take, you know, if we take a break this morning, I can go to the office and get that due.
Okay, before we leave, Mark mentioned upfitting. And as we think about creating what will be, hopefully, a signature amenity for our community, we should think about potential sponsors. Maybe the Williamson folks want to make a contribution to keep talking that talk and give them the opportunity to do the cardio room. Maybe there are other entities in our community that want to contribute and might be something to think about.
If you could turn your advisory board loose on that kind of thinking, that'd be a good thought.
Okay, item next, Mr. Kelly.
One last thing. On your weight room, that, you almost have to keep that up to date. I mean, you're, I'm trying to be a proponent here. It needs help.
Yes.
It's the understatement.
Yes, and if you look, see that as one of the items that was underspent? And we've sort of given her some incentive the other day to make sure that she addressed the weight room.
Yeah.
She has a few items that she's picking up on. She went over a minute ago.
I've had a lot of people tell me that they wish there were different things in there or more current things in there. But I'm good.
Item next, Mr. Kelly.
It's Heather once again, Community Building, Community Center. It's just the next tab. It's just the next tab. Again, there's no additional staff, no staffing, capital, none of that, but there is some capital expenditures. And you can see, it's not a lot to this department. They do a good job with what they have, and they provide a service for the town.
That the building?
Yeah, right behind us.
Yeah.
We'll turn that over to Heather, and she's available for any questions.
Yes. So, I think the, the largest increase would be the capital outlay again. So, Stephanie, who's worked with them for years, requested two recumbent bikes. The reason being, a lot of the, the people that come and participate are picked up by the town, and then they're there, they play bingo, they play rummy cube, sometimes they sit and talk, which is also important. But she had mentioned, if we, if there are a few bikes down there, they could also be exercising, which I think is a great idea, because then, what will happen is, at the end, after they eat lunch, and have, they do cheer yoga once a week, they watch a movie, but once they're done, they get taken back home, and then they won't leave the, they don't have a way to leave again until the next morning, and they come pick them up. So, this allows them to have socialization and some exercise. In other words, they won't be able to come down to the Rec Center and use a bike down there. So, that was the, the hope. And then, currently, the car that is assigned to their, well, to the, the Rec Center, or the community center, is the, it's a Ford, sorry, can't remember the, it's an old police car, basically. So, there's room for three people in the back, one person in the front, and the driver. And because of COVID, they haven't, they've stopped taking trips, because really, you can only accommodate two people, to maybe three, in there. And the trips they would take would be to the Brunswick Community College, the, the hair, sorry, I can't, I can't remember the name of it, but they have a program where the people go, beautician program, they will do their hair for free. And of course, as we talked about, some of them don't have transportation, not their own. So, that's how they were doing that. And sometimes they will go to Leland to go to Aldi, so they can get some groceries. But basically, getting them out, getting them to do stuff to help them, but they've kind of stopped that at this point, because the only way to do that currently is to take a 14-passenger bus, which fiscally, with fuel, doesn't make a lot of sense. So, that was the reason for asking for the, the transit van to replace the Crown Victoria that they currently have.
Crown Vic has 156,000 miles on it.
Thank you. That was my next question. And what's the capacity of the transit van?
The way that they have it configured, in case they needed a wheelchair in the back, it can hold 13. So, then we would, we might take eight.
Is that similar to the van you have at the Rec Department?
It's, actually, I guess it would be the black van, the cargo van. It would be, except a door on the other side, and then obviously seats. But yes, very similar.
Can they borrow from each other?
So, unfortunately, that, that is a cargo van, so the, the only thing in the back of that is a cage. There's no seats there.
There was the animal control van for a while.
Yeah.
Then we did away with animal control, sorry.
Oh, I didn't know that. Don't be sorry.
Like I said, they get the other vehicles. That's the big, that's the big topics for that.
That's one of the new people, I don't know if they've told you very often, Heather, you're doing a very good job.
Thank you.
I have nothing else.
All right, you're good.
You know, the same conversation we just had about moving toward an electric fleet, especially if this item may be delayed for another year, it may be a part of that initial fleet conversation going forward. And then, as always, grant money, grant money, grant money. Since this is servicing a specific community need, let's see if there's any money out there available to subsidize being able to transport people to their needs.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Kelly, item next.
Ten-minute break?
Three minutes.
(laughing).
Sheila is on break right now.
She is, isn't she?
Budget hearing number two is back after a brief recess. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, sir. We have gone to Administration 10-420. You can see the summary of this. There was discussions about some additional staff and those kind of things. We did not put anything in here. We figured that'd be a topic later during the budget cycle about adding any, anyone to Administration Department. So, what you see, the 22-23 budget is actually a slight decrease in the amounts. Capital outlay, right now, we put in the phase two sidewalk to continue that through the asphalted areas, I should say. And then, the skate park, the money for that makes up the difference between the 575 and the 275. So, what that is, is the skate park will be carried over as a capital project, that money just carries over to a capital project line item. That is why you see the deduction right there in that amount. So, that is what reflects the negative number for the percentage.
Are they starting that this year?
The skate park, the, the week after Labor Day is when they said they would be here. As you remember, when we talked to them, when we hired them, they came in and said the first time they could get here would be after Labor Day, just with all the projects and everything that they had. And they wanted to make sure that they followed the process that we asked for. And now, the conceptual drawing, I think maybe you probably saw it at the last great meeting. So, that's getting ready to be advertised and for public comment and for another meeting for the public to voice their concerns, ideas, input for that design. So, that is going forward, but that is no longer carrying over, it'll be into a separate line item.
So, the transfers, Mr. Hatton? 254-649.
At this point, the transfer item will move as we go through the budget process. It will not, it's not static at this point, because it's looks at, as you can see on the second page of the budget summary admin, the transfer at this point in there is the golf course. As we come up, as we go through the golf course later on in the budget process, that number there would either go up or go down, and it's based on what we feel the revenue will be at the golf course and the expenses that will be incurred. That is the subsidy. And the other items there, at this point, I don't anticipate any other transfers from general fund, but, you know, if we get into a situation such as with solid waste or whatever, then we would, that number would grow based on whatever the common expenses are of that certain fund.
You're telling me it's a contingency line item?
Yes, sir, at this point, until we go through the other departments.
Mr. Kelly, at what point are we going to talk about the COG and planning needs and perhaps an expansion of that? Is that later in the, in the discussion? Because I, I still remain concerned about our lack of economic development capacity, and I think we need it desperately as we approach Williamson and Pine Forest and whatever that other development is, the letters.
Whatever it's going to be.
Yeah.
But during that, I mean, we've been talking with Wes about those as well, looking at the planner's job description and those kind of things, how much are we going to emphasize economic development inside the planner's position? And that is something we need to get to when we talk about the new planning department here shortly.
All right. So, we'll defer that discussion to later in this.
About 20 minutes.
Is it possible to, in an interim stopgap measure, to put out for a contracted service from a third-party provider to start working on economic development? That would be more cost-effective versus trying to build it into a staff position if we're going to struggle around that topic?
Yeah, talking with Wes, I mean, we're not, the planner's going to be the planner. We are putting something in there where the person also is going to need some experience in economic development. He's not going to be an economic development guru or person. It is something that we could look at, would be recommended, that it would be a part-time or as-needed or contractual thing for economic development. I don't think we need to have a person sitting on staff unless it is a part-time position or, or something of that nature, or an amount for a contractor to not exceed a certain dollar amount, and then we bring it back to council saying, this is what we've gathered, this is what he's brought forward or she's brought forward, and do we want to extend the contract beyond this point? We've done that before for other services, that's something we could look at.
Because, I mean, just having an economic development responsibility defined on the books doesn't necessarily mean that that is effectively doing something. There are, there are specific deliverables that would be expected from anyone who would have economic development added to their job responsibilities. And so, you know, if there is an opportunity to, you know, contract for that in the short term, I, I think we need to, to evaluate that and to see where we, where we are with this year's expenses. It looks like, I, I, I like the trend, but it almost seems like across the board so far, we're seeing expenses come in less than the fiscal year budget. So, that's a, that's a good trend, potentially, that I'm seeing. So, maybe there's something, you know, some monies available today to, to go ahead and get started on some of those deliverables, because as Council member Bach has pointed out, we, we do feel that it's urgent that we get started on those deliverables. I think the, if we just continue to wait, then we're, we're going to be behind playing catch-up. We're probably already going to have to play catch-up, so if, if we could take a look at that.
On your economic development, would you consider the, how the commercial corridor looks from Town Hall down to Yopon? Because right now, we're looking at doing the sidewalks a second phase through that area. I mean, staff, I think it's about time that we address with DOT to work with them about whatever they could. I know they're probably not going to curb and gutter because of stormwater, those kind of things, maybe islands in the radiuses like Yopon, finally talked them into 30 years ago, and that's where you see the concrete columns down there in Yopon. I think it's time to address that. I don't think the planner would be the person for that, but I think we need to go ahead and push that through that, to start that. And that's one thing that we think that that person would be able to assist us with going forward, is to try to renovate. Councilman Bach had even talked about, maybe at some point, offering incentives to the grocery store or to the gas station to make their improvements in front and sort of be a partner with them during that process. If that's something that we're looking at, then I think that is something that we can probably find some money this year and carry over some more for next year to be able to do that. If that's sort of what you're asking, is economic developer too, or is it all development?
No, I mean, I think it's, it's, if, there's multiple responsibilities. Surely, working with existing commercial areas that are already developed is important, because we've got to attract additional commercial development to the parcels that are not developed. So, a big part of economic development is, is advertising, so to speak, the town, right? We have these commercial parcels available, this is why you should consider relocating your business or expanding your business to the Oak Island area for these reasons. And it certainly helps if we show, you know, improvements and effort in maintaining existing areas, you know, whether it's sidewalks or beautification or, you know, retail front development. And there's grant money available, I know, to do some of those type of downtown transformation projects. But, you know, there's also an opportunity, and this is probably the only time you're going to hear me say that I would be in favor of a tax, and that is a sales tax. You can define a, a sales tax district for your downtown area and tack on a, a half a percent or whatever in sales tax, but that money would have to go toward revitalizing that downtown sales tax district, right? You can't use that money for anything else but that. So, that's kind of the extreme of, of making life, you know, more pleasant or pedestrian accessible, or whatever the initiative would be for existing commercial areas. But there's certainly grant money available, and yeah, economic development needs to look at existing corridors in order to make new corridors marketable, right? So, we attract commercial business here. The Williamson development is going to be even more critical, because as that site plans get socialized, it's already floating around, because you can do a search and, and find it on the, on the internet. That's going to start attracting commercial investors to, who have an interest in bringing, you know, either franchises or retail or whatever their business model may be, they're going to want to take a look at the Williamson try. And so, you know, part of our effort would be to make sure we're marketing the town of Oak Island appropriately, so they, so they understand what they're getting involved in, right? We literally have, you know, a permanent population that fills business, local businesses year-round, right? That's a huge selling point for, for our town. We're not just a vacation destination, we are a year-round destination. So, that's a huge selling point, right? But we got to get that word out there, right?
Mr. Kelly? Quick question. Economic development and planner, did you say those two things don't really go together?
They, not into, we don't need our planner being our economic development person. We need our planner being our planner. But we need our planner to have some experience and knowledge of economic development to make sure that he can go forward with the discussions that we need to have with other people coming into the town, so he would understand why they're asking him on the planning side.
Okay. And as was mentioned, marketing, would that come under the, who, who's purview would that be, marketing? Would that be?
The economic developer would sit there, and we'd come up with a, a sales brochure or sales ad for town of Oak Island as a whole. We have these people come and visit, we have these people living here, this is our marketing age groups, this is what we have demographic-wise, everything that we have to offer somebody to come into our town, that basically would be our marketing point. We'd advertise what we have and where we want to go and what we see as the future.
Well, who's going to handle the marketing, though? I mean, who's going to come up with this plan?
That'd be something that we'd have to work all with together and come up with. But if we brought in a firm or a individual or whatever we decided to do, that would be one of their goals, is to work with staff and council to be able to generate a final product that we felt comfortable advertising and marketing the town of Oak Island.
And one, one last thing. Have we ever taken the, the tact, if you will, of, because I know there's a lot of people in this town that are extremely talented and retired from this or that, have we ever targeted the, the citizens for some of these positions to see if it's something, especially, you mentioned part-time for, for some of this, would it, would it, how would you go about that?
We never advertised. They hear you talking right now, but we've never advertised except on the billboard. Two months ago, when we put on there, we need somebody to help us with the beach, we're going to pay you seven, when they, when we say we need volunteers on the beach, no one can. We put $17.50, we had 20 people call before noon. We put seventeen dollars and fifty cent, we had twenty people call before noon. So i- it, it's, yes, people are here, yes, people are retired. I mean, there's a planner who just retired here. He was one of the ones that applied for one of the boards and committees.
Gentleman from New Bern.
Yeah. But he is not, nowhere interested to come back to work, but he is, you know, volunteering and those kind of things like that, yes, he is open. But no, we haven't officially done anything like that.
Thank you.
So Charlie raises an interesting point, that, that there are a lot of talented people. I bumped into a landscape architect and I pointed him towards environmental folks because he wants to get rid of the Bradford pear trees and, and he's concerned about the, what he perceives to be the inadequacy of our tree ordinance and so on and so forth. I wanna just amplify what Mark said, and I know we're really privileged to have him here because he was formerly an economic development officer. I'll say it again, we need the capacity and we need a person, or if not that, an interim contractual arrangement. We, we cannot kick this can down the road. What this is really about is two things. Transforming the downtown area on a consensual basis with the businesses there, making it attractive, pedestrian-friendly. That was a land use goal priority from way back. We've made a little progress on that. There's much that could be done. The other thing that I think we have to consider is Williamson plus Pine Forest plus whatever those alphabet things are, that's gonna transform this town in the next five to ten years. We need to get ahead of that, and we need the capacity of having an economic development. For, as Mark said, these are undeveloped corridors. This is the opportunity to grow our tax base. We miss this, we're gonna be in trouble. We're gonna have lots of residential build-out and demand for services and no tax base. So I, I can't think of anything more critical. Yes, we need police and fire, they provide services. But frankly, if we don't man- manage the growth, and I use that in a benign way, it'll manage us. It's, it's really that simple. And, you know, we've talked, I've talked about this for five years now. Yeah, I'm just gonna express my frustration, that we haven't done anything. Keep saying, well, the future is the future. Well, the future's here. Williamson folks are here, right? And, and yet, we don't have an ED. We've got Wes on a part-time basis. I'll rest my case.
You, you say you ask for no additional people. Is it time since everyone seems to be in agreement that we need an economic developer to, to put that into budget for this coming year?
Well, I'm calling it a capacity so that we have the flexibility to contract it or get a person. I think that's a discussion that we need to really have when we thought about it a little bit, and, you know, we can defer to Mark's prior expertise, you know? Does that really, I think it would be very impactful, have somebody here, that's all they do, right? And the planner is over here. And so that, when people say, what, what in God's name is going on with Williamson? We can say, we're on top of that. We've got a conditional zoning agreement, got a development agreement, we're working with Pine Forest, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Right now, it's all just floating, it's nebulous.
Could, could Mike put in the currents that were entertaining thoughts of bringing that position forward, just to get the ball rolling? What's your thought on that?
All right, so Charlie asked a question a minute ago about volunteers and people coming in. If you want every, every person from every field coming in with an idea, then I'd say, yes, sir. If you want to narrow a field to sort of what I believe is what's needed, then I believe we need to have a professional or someone to address those matters.
Counselor of government?
Well, I believe we could either send in RFPs for having a firm, or we should look at hiring an individual.
I think that's the choice. I'm sorry, I, I wanted to pick up on Charlie's point, and my frustration got the better of me. If we had an economic development capacity, whether it's a person, preferably, or a contracted service, then all of these people who wanna help, right? He, he gathers those, he or she gathers those people. We invite them, right? We don't have to, that's what, that, what the person's going to do, he's gonna meet with local business people, he's gonna meet with people who have expertise. He might even form a working task force, right? And that's why we need the person to do that, right? If we just put out ads that come help us, it'll be scattershot. If we, if we're serious and we have-
One leader.
Yeah, we have the person, and that's what he's doing, and he invites public, invites people with expertise to come. And so, they will come. If you build it, they'll come.
No, you're not like, we're, we're not even talking about you yet. So, uh-
All right, so that's, that's, we need cheer here, that's something for all of us to really think about.
Well, we will look at that and have a number and stuff for you available at the next workshop, or we may send it to you electronically, so just so you can look at.
Wonderful, thank you, sir.
Good deal. Next item.
Any other questions on the administration?
No, I think we're ready for it. Steve, the next item?
Steve is the next item.
What's the number?
Steve has two. We're gonna, we drag, drug, drug, dragging him in. It is a purple, ten, five, forty.
Before we get off that, though, can, can I ask Mr. Hatton about the transfer to the golf course of two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand? Is that just for their, their need?
Yes, sir.
They're that much short?
They're that much short. As of right now, the way we've got the preliminary budget for the golf course, as we get into it, we'll hopefully lower that number, I'm hoping.
They're not asking for any people, they're not asking for any equipment. Last year, we set up a lease agreement for three, three or five years, I don't remember the length, for the equipment, instead of us continually buying piece here, piece there. So that has gone into effect, so there's nothing really new in that budget, it's just that's what that budget is. But we'll get to that one. But now we're at ten, five, forty, everybody find that one? Charlie wore purple, so that's why we tried to stay with purple today. So we have development services. We have taken this and divided it in two departments. We had Wes on board here for the last few months. We've been talking with him about the needs of the town, where the town is. We have continually bogged Steve down on things that we continue to hand him because things happen and we just need Steve to handle those situations. At this time, we're gonna separate it out into two departments to try to free Steve up to do what Steve needs to do in building inspections. So we have changed it to building code department and then the planning department. So there'll be a, a department that is branched off of Steve's department. We've worked with Steve over the last few weeks here to try to make sure the split is needed and even and distributed. So when you get to the planning board, you'll see no current budget, no previous years or anything like that because it didn't exist. So we went through the vehicles, we've gone through the training, we've gone through the certification requirements, we've gone through the organizational needs, we've gone through Arc GIS mapping. We've tried to be able to cover all the bases on what is in front of us and Steve has sort of been doing within his department the whole time. We've separated the staff out. We've looked at staff needs. This does have a additional staff member in building code, and it does have an additional member in zoning. When we get over to the planning side, that's where zoning is now, zoning administrators. We all know the, the complaints, y'all get them, we get them. We open cases, we're closing cases, but I believe there's a, a better, I think we could do better what we had and try to get these things eliminated and try to get ahead of things instead of being always active to it, reactive to it, instead of proactive with it. As far as the building code, like I said, we are asking for a person permitting. We, I'll let Steve get started here in a second, but it's taken a while to get the permits. That was one of the things that y'all had talked about before, services that we're providing, if we could improve on our services. This is one of the services, but to improve on the service, it requires a person. So that's something we all need to address. Contracted, I mean, operational expenditures, like I said, we've tried to split those out and everything, as you can see. And I'll go ahead and turn this over to Steve and let him get started, or open up for any questions or whatever you have.
Well, just welcome. Thank you for coming so punctually, we appreciate it. We're trying to follow a, a template so we can move forward, and our, our first meeting went rather long. So staffing requests, the justification, any equipment, supplies that you need, critical things, critical areas within your new bailiwick. You have the floor, sir.
I am requesting in the building code division portion of development services for a new permitting specialist, and I'm making that a permit specialist two position. Currently, we only have the two permit specialists in place, and over the years, we've always brought in more inspectors and created some zoning technician positions to handle the code cases that were coming in, taking the workload off of the inspector, but we've never increased staffing for the permanent specialist. Since I've been here in two thousand, we've only had two permit techs, two permit specialists. They had different names back then, administrative support specialist, I believe is what they were called at one time. The need for the additional staff member is to help process these permits that we're receiving. We have been working with Tyler, our software program, that we have the means to be able to, to go paperless with them. We, we, we can do everything online. Problem is, is that Tyler is a difficult company to work with, Cheryl's been trying to spearhead this for a while, I've been working with them, we've got hooks working with them, and we just can't get the two to communicate together to get this portal system working. Plus, they've also are updating, we were, I'm trying to think, Silver, Silverline or something, there's an operating system that runs this, they're doing away with that, Silverlight. And they're going for a, a different software where we'll be able to just open up the program for everybody to access easier, but we're not getting that transition done. So that person that I'm looking at for the permit specialist two will be charged with more responsibility in the department other than just permitting. They'll be working with Tyler to get this transition going, they'll be looking at training the other staff on the new process, they'll also be keeping the permit applications up to date. We, we're so far behind with the changes in state laws that some of our permit applications need to be updated, but I just don't have the staffing to do it. So that, and, and that position is crucial to me if we wanna provide our town with services that, that they need as well. The permit process right now, the zoning review process, that takes about two weeks if everything's complete and correct. You know, in that permit process, we, we not only look at the zoning, but we look at the storm, we, we put it together now that we've got a stormwater guy, that's helped my department as well because we temporarily stepped in to help out with the storm warning, stormwater permitting while that position laid vacant for so long. But we prepare the stormwater, we prepare the sewer and water needs, and we send those over to the other departments that need to be reviewed. I need to back up, Tom?
Oh, you gotta holler into the mic.
Testing, one, two. Test out, kinda pick it up. Kyle used to holler if he touched his mic.
Before you go on, how far behind are you? This, two weeks should be what, two days? I'm trying to understand the backlog.
Yeah. We're, we're probably a month behind. And one, one of the problems that we have also is that the increase in the regulations that we enforce now, the, the sedimentation erosion control, the temporary driveway construction, the way we do our tree and vegetation, the way we verify the right-ofways, you know, that's, that's a lot to do, and when they're issuing anywhere between thirty to forty-five development permits in one month, it's, it's a lot to process.
I think, what, what would be your norm?
Oh, oh, oh.
If everything was good, what would be a norm?
I apologize, I misunderstood the question.
Correct.
Two weeks for the, if everything's, again, correct, two weeks to do a development permit. If it's not, it, it extends it. Once that's been approved, we, it should just be a building permit review, but we're so backed up on inspections as well that the, the, and, and of course, I put in for a position last year which I was granted, but I just can't get anybody in to fill that position because of, you know, that nobody's gonna leave a job for a five-thousand-dollar increase, you know, that they're not gonna, thirty percent, I think, is usually a rule of thumb, if you're gonna change job, you wanna see at least a thirty percent pay increase from your current position. That being said, it can be up to a week, the two weeks to get the building permit review, which by general statute, we have two weeks to re, get the first review completed. I was wanting that to be a two-to-three-day turnaround period, to get the permit, building permit, they get the zoning approval, they get the development permit, and then they can submit the building permit application. We're not gonna waste staff time reviewing building permits if they can't get past zoning. I just, me, it makes sense. I mean, we could take the building, but if they can't get the zoning permit, then we've wasted staff time. But it should be that we get the permit application in, get the review done in two, three days, and be able to submit on the fourth day. That should be the ideal process.
Our town's growing by leaps and bounds, but your department's not growing by leaps and bounds.
I would say that's an accurate statement, yes, and, and based off of the proposed development, we're, we're still growing, and we can't wait for that day to come, we need to be preparing today.
Steve's department, water, sewer, police. Only ones that has grown is only, is only two departments. And the rest of them sort of been, we've, we've been able to provide the service that we have, but now the services are starting to extend. So in an ideal world, Steve, if Mr. Hatton came in and applied for a building permit, when should Mr. Hatton be able to receive a building permit?
I, I'm, we're telling people four weeks.
And are we meeting the four weeks, or are we going beyond the four weeks?
We're, we're meeting the four weeks. Some of them, again, it depends on the submitted package. We, we've got some still being processed from January. And we've got contractors out there that, that look at, I'm gonna go ahead and clear the lot, and it's just a cost of doing business without the permits.
We do have a lot of that. Can you elaborate a, a bit on the, the, the software dilemma you seem to be facing? Because it seems to me if you solve that, you would instantly be more efficient, but for bringing in another person to fix it? Is that, am I understanding that right?
Well, it, yes, you are, but even, even once we get the software up and running that we have in place, it, that doesn't work. And that's why we gotta get Tyler and, and staffing together and hooks to, to get it resolved. But one per, who, once we get that done, we still need somebody there that will be opening up all the permits that come in that morning and then directing them and, and entering them into the system and directing them to the other staff members that they need to review. We'd have to send it to, you know, the public works, I'm not public, well, the public works for, for stormwater, I'm not sure where his department is, but we'll have to send it to stormwater, we'll have to send it to public utilities. Depending on the situation, there might be other state agencies that would have to send it out to for review, with KAMA, and, and then, of course, then the zoning staff would get to it as well. So they would have to process every morning all the applications that came in.
The Tyler software is a, is an ongoing problem through all departments. We have been working with them since we, since we got them, years ago when we changed. They'll give you a piece or a new module or those kind of things, give you the training on it, and it's already outdated when it gets there. We have started to look at something, other firms would be able to change it, but it, it's a time thing. The last one took over a year to get everything just transferred over and those kind of obstacles that we rented it before. But there is problems with the Tyler software.
When we purchased that piece that Steve and Mr. Kelly's talking about, we were told that it did all kinds of different things, and it's, has not performed near what they sold us.
Not to be flip, but, you know, fire Tyler and move on, get something else, but what, the way I understand your argument is that the inefficiency is driven largely by not just the numbers, but the software doesn't work, which would make you instantly more efficient. So that makes the argument for adding a person really, I see an emerging, you know, number of additional services I'll have to provide. Because right, right now, today, if I fixed Tyler, you'd be more efficient, correct?
Yes.
I mean, you'd have to be. So I just want, for counsel, but largely for my own benefit, that makes the argument, as I sit here, you know, in developmental services, I see an expanding emerging need coming. And that is exacerbated by the fact that the software doesn't work.
Even if the software was working, I would still need this other staff member.
Eventually. If it were working today, would you need another person?
I need someone now. I'm $20,000 in overtime, which I've blown that line item budget. I've got another part-time person that comes in maybe once, twice a week, depending on the need. I got that clear with David. So I've got somebody coming in, and she's been doing that. And it's Donna Coleman who used to work for the town, and she's helping facilitate some of the office needs. She does some filing. She, she sits up front and answers the phone and things like that so other staff members can do their job. So I've got a part-time person coming in, and I got a huge amount of overtime.
Yeah, we stopped, we tried to eliminate the overtime, brought in the part-time person. Steve's, Steve's staff will work six days a week, but we cut them back to five days a week. Having Tyler being fixed, like Steve was addressing the other people, we have the funds because we haven't found the code officer two. So we have the funds to be able to bring the part-time person in to be able to start assisting Steve. But there is a need for an individual sitting there. Even if the Tyler software worked perfectly, or the service that we need to provide and the growing that we have, a person's still got to be able to sit there and send everything out and gather everything back out to reduce the time on the permit. The software didn't have anything to do with the time.
To replace Tyler, what would, what would replacement software cost?
My initial thought would be $100,000 for everything, and that's finance.
That's about what Tyler costs?
Customer service downstairs.
That's more.
Tyler was more.
Does Tyler have a track record of not performing?
They, yeah, when we hired them, they had a perfect track record. When the people we went to see, visited, each department got to go talk to someone that had their software, they were in the midst of providing updates and upgrades to their system. That's after we signed on, the upgrades to their system. And when you call them or whatever, it's, you just sit there and wait for them to pick up the phone. Push the button, go about your job, and wait for someone to answer.
So in layman's terms, two things, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to besmirch anyone, but we need to get rid of Tyler. They either need to improve their product, or we need to, we have looked at other products, and one of the problems that we've ran into is that we want products that work together. We want it to be able to work through finance. And that's, was part of the bag of beans that Tyler sold us to begin with, was that it communicates with finance. It does not. So we've actually got an issue where we had to fill out daily reports, manually fill them out, take them down there to customer services, and then they had to input them into the system a second time. And the person that I hear that you're asking for, in my terms, is like a traffic cop directing traffic, making sure that the information goes where it's supposed to go, which would speed up the process. Yes. Okay. Yeah. I mean, right now, the current staff has enough time, they don't, I keep telling them to take the permit application, don't let that person leave the window until you've processed that application. Because they've got backed up so many times that they would just take the application, lay it to the side, call the next people, and then have a pile of applications sitting over there. And then the next day, they're trying to process that, but the window's the same. So we were getting stacks of permits sitting there that weren't being processed, and then they called me, and I have to stop what I'm doing and trying to figure out where they are in the process. I mean, the reason I was running late, Dave texted, can you come up? I was on the phone for 15 minutes because somebody was, and it was a zoning complaint, but they were complaining about a boat trailer that looked perfectly fine, but he wasn't satisfied with staff's actions. But yes, so there was creating a backlog, and we do need that traffic controller, as you said, to facilitate these permits and get them to the right desk.
If y'all haven't figured it out by now, I think outside the box. So I'm going to suggest something probably kind of radical, but I think it might be worth discussions. Caswell Beach not too long ago moved quite a bit of their services back over to the county to alleviate their demand over there. I know they're smaller than us, but have we ever considered looking at how the county operates? I hear that they're way more efficient than we are, turning around permitting and getting things pushed through the system. I don't know if they're on a different software than we're on. Surely, they probably have more people to do that. But with the Williamson track, and I, so this is my comparison. Today, we're sitting here with a one-month backlog, roughly, what, 300 permits a year, right, within the town limits? I know at some point that's going to slow down because there won't be any more land for permitting within the town of Oak Island. But then, probably around that time, the Williamson track is going to start permitting, and they stood here and said that their build out is 10 years. Well, 7,000 units over 10 years is 700 permits a year. If we have a one-month backlog today for 300 permits a year, and we're only looking at adding one person, we can't add enough staff to get ready for the Williamson track. So I really think it's a serious conversation to figure out, how do we leverage what the Brunswick County services can do? Whether that's we turn over all permitting on the mainland to the county, and we just focus on, on island, or however we divide this up. But if there's other resources available to help with this workload, who have an efficient process in place, whether because it's more people or a different computer system, I think it's, we need to take a look at that. Caswell Beach seems to have been successful in moving some of their services over to the county. Have we ever considered working with the county to help with our backlog and/or future permitting needs and code enforcement that we're getting ready to face? Because I just, I don't think we can ramp up, with the budget that we generate today, we are not going to be able to ramp up and get ready for 700 permits a year until those 700 permits per year are already upon us, is what I'm trying to say. So in the meantime, there's got to be some sort of, let's fill the gap with help. Where can we get help? I mean, we're a part of Brunswick County, and our taxpayers pay Brunswick County taxes. So if there's a way they can help us get through this growing pain, then I think we should explore that.
Caswell Beach did use the county briefly. It didn't work. The citizens didn't like the process. The, they had issues with, they did take over the flood for them. There were some conflicting issues with the county flood ordinance and the town flood ordinances and permits that were issued. I was brought in on several conversations with property owners and developers, asking me for help on that issue. The Caswell Beach has now hired another building inspector. They left the county. The county's great, they're overworked as well, they've got positions available and to burden them more. I don't know if that's going to be, you know, processed because they'll have to add more staff, and they'll be in the same situation as they're not going to be able to get staffing. Michael Slate is the department head for that division, and they brought him in because the state was getting ready to take over the county because of their insufficiencies that they were providing to the county. They weren't getting the permits issued, they weren't getting the inspections done, and there was a whole bunch of other problems that caused several of the inspectors their positions over there. So, you know, moving it, that is an option. I like coloring outside the box as well. But you have to understand, once you release that responsibility, you as a council member really don't have any more guidance over it as you do if you keep it in-house. You know, you can sit here and you can provide the services and staffing that you need for your citizens, where they're not, they won't do zoning. So you'll still have to have the zoning department, you'll still have, and I wouldn't, if you wanted to move your flood over there to them, they're going to want you to adopt the county flood ordinance, which may not align with what you want for Oak Island. You may want to have higher standards to have a better rate for your citizens. Right now, we've got a CRS rating of six that we're able to get. We hopefully will maintain that, but they keep changing the rules for the CRS rating. That's a community rating system for your flood insurance. The lower the number, it's one through 10, 10 being, you know, I've signed up for the program. And as you get higher standards and meet these targets, and you get a lower CRS rating, you get discounts for your citizens. A six is pretty good. We're trying to get to a five, but they keep raising that bar, and they've raised it more this year to get to that bar. So that being said, they, they may, I don't say they will, they may take on the flood as well, but then you, as the county, you're, that's what Caswell Beach was supposed to have done. They were supposed to adopted the county's ordinance, flood ordinance, and they didn't do that. And then the county inspector was trying to enforce the county flood ordinance on the citizens of Caswell Beach on permits that were issued before they partnered up with the county. There was this company down here one time, SafeBuild, I think was the name, and they were a private corporation, and they were taking over Caswell Beach to do the inspections for them. That failed as well. They were targeting, or I wouldn't say targeting, they were reaching out to Oak Island to try to take on that, to take on the town's responsibility. But they, their business plan was, don't make ways, pass everything, and that didn't work for the state of North Carolina.
Let me turn with his permission, Councilman Martin's question, just modified a little bit. So I agree with him that it's all about managing growth, which we could do better, certainly. And once Williamson comes online, it's going to be an enormous challenge. So if the county would not be an acceptable alternative, what I would suggest we think about is today, right now, whether you get the person or not, you still face that problem. It's coming, you can see that train. We need to fire Tyler, and we need to get software that works, and we need it now, right? That should be in the budget. That's the long-term solution. Because otherwise, we'll be adding, you know, five, six, you know, permitting specialists. I mean, this should be digital, should be efficient. And I don't know whether we've exhausted our efforts to get them to work or not. But if we really are at a point of crisis, headed toward an even larger one, then let's bite the bullet now, get the software, give Steve the person to fix this, because this drip, drip, drip is not going to work.
I agree. The county, they, my understanding is they created their own software. And when we started looking at software back in 2000, whatever it was, nine, 10, you know, because we had Black Bear for the longest time. I mentioned to the person that was in charge of the finance back then about looking at county's software. And they had already, they had their, it was in-house, it was created by them, and that's what they're running today, is the same program. I have talked, I don't know who you heard about the permitting status out there. I'm dealing with the building inspector, building inspectors with the contractors and homeowners, and they're calling me again, saying, what can they do to help get their permits processed over there? Submit everything correctly is the easiest thing to do, provide all the data that they need. But it's not as efficient as you have been led to believe from what I've been told as well. So there's got to be a medium in there somewhere. They still have their problems, but go ahead.
Believe it or not, Councilman Martin and I share a certain degree of conservatism about budgets, right? That's what we're trying to do here. So if you're granted a person, you don't need a part-time person, you don't need the overtime, but nothing changes until we get new software. And it sounds like we're going to have to
Yes.
get a new software system in there, not only that solves your backlog now, but prepares you for Williamson.
I agree.
I mean, I think we got to get that into budget. That's more efficient than what, adding people and pieces, it's just not going to work.
Yeah, I have asked for an additional $10,000 just to go toward Tyler, but, you know, that's to try and get this program to get to everything up and running.
You came in asking for less money this year than you had last year in your budget.
Well, we split it, so don't let that
Of course, it's planned.
Put the shift.
Yeah, but, yeah.
I agree, we need
Yeah.
When we bring the next department up, there's an increase.
Yeah.
So, gentlemen, where are we with Tyler? Have we exhausted all of our efforts, and we're going to get rid of them or not? I mean, that's
I could add that downstairs in customer service, it's an absolute nightmare.
I'd fire them, is my vote.
Because they're working with what's called version nine, and up here, I'm working with version 10. Talk to each other, so we have to jump through hoops to get it to work.
We'll have RFPs out and get a new software. Hatton will just have to go through the process one more time.
One last thing. So I want to make sure my statement is accurate. Correct me if I'm wrong, please. If we get new software, which it appears that everyone up here is saying, get it, fire Tyler, we add an additional person, the part-time person you have now and the overtime will go away. So it's going to be a net wash, pretty close, right?
Yes.
What does this specialist two make? What's the starting salary?
According to your paper, your request, it's in the 40s.
In the 40s, right? So you had 20 in overtime. How much are you paying the part-time person?
Probably up around $14,000.
Okay. So it's a, it's almost a wash, right? And then we fix the problem. It sounds like it's an intractable problem.
Yeah, no, I agree. And instead of spending that $35,000 to $40,000 on Band-Aids for
The software thing, when Steve was in here talking about, everybody at the window hands him the things, and they set it to the side. That has nothing to do with software. That's the volume of work. So software's not our only holdup, the volume of work, staff can't take it in the window fast enough.
That's why it needs more bodies.
If we didn't have that software, we wouldn't even be, we would not be issuing permits. It's just, the software, it's, it's okay. It works. But it's the efficiency that I need to improve on.
Okay.
They want that to get lost, it's not just
Fair, fair, that's a fair point. Yep. We still have a volume issue and a resource issue, which we may see a slight improvement, and then we're going to turn around and be in a bigger hole than we're in today when the Williamson track comes online.
The Williamson track, the good thing on that is they're going to have to get the environmental, they're going to have to do roads, they're going to have to utilities.
Right, yeah.
Then they're going to have to bring us a plan, they already
Construction plan.
Everything's laid out differently, so this, this section number one's going to come in first, section two, plot plan comes in second. So we will have something to go off of. It's not 700 homes, it isn't going to be spread all the way across the community because that's not practical. They're going to do a
Odd at a time.
Right, yeah, makes sense.
They're probably two years out before we can issue the first payment.
My only other comment, if I have a couple of minutes, is I see there's another vehicle request in, as a capital atlay in this plan as well. I really, I guess my concern at this point is if, if, if things are in progression towards some negotiated deal in the future of changing out the fleet to electric for local governments. Are these vehicle requests, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't want to buy a new vehicle that's gasoline. In two years, we're going to be selling it back because we're now leasing an electric fleet.
I don't think, talking with the cog, I don't think it's going to be that fast.
Okay. That's, that was my question. Is it two years? Is it four? Is it 10?
They're saying three to five, but maybe five to seven.
So if we purchase a new vehicle today, we're still not at end-of-life, even if it's five years from now on this
But if we go to the lease program, what they do, they will sell off.
And we should get more for newer equipment in that, in the trade.
The depreciation on that will be less.
Okay. I just want to
It's, this is where it falls.
Yeah, I understand.
Did y'all happen to see the news where there's a new car company coming to North Carolina, electrical car company? It's to, I call it, you know, watch the news here in North
It's going to give
It's going to give Tesla run for the money. It's going to be a lease program on the batteries. So, you purchase the vehicle and then it's a monthly lease for the batteries. Pretty interesting concept. I'll see if I can't dig that article up for you. My understanding is coming to North Carolina. But that might be an option.
We do have two other Trail Blazers in administration that's got the same years and things like that. We are not replacing them. We will retain those two and just keep driving those, even though they meet the criteria too. But one of them's mine, and, and the other ones are admin to be utilized, but we're not looking at, just because they met it. If it breaks down on me, it just breaks down on me, I mean
And that's basically what I'm asking for, it's like, can we delay, you know, some of these new purchases long enough to get to this new platform that we're going to move to eventually, right? But, I understand if some assets are just ready at end of life, they're at end of life, right? And, and we just, we don't really have a choice, so.
This one, the one that Steve got, Steve inherited vehicles before we give them to Park and Rex. Steve's came from the sewer project, Troy Davis, then went to the fire department for a while, and then came to Steve. So, it's, it's a fourth generation vehicle.
Chevy Trail Bowser, Mr. Bach has 133,000 miles on it.
Yeah, I understand. I, I get Councilman Martin's
Still operates, it goes
Thank you, you're anticipating my question, but I, I think Councilman Martin's made a compelling point that as we get closer to the transition to electric and we get greener, more efficient, we should begin to prepare for that, so.
The reason why we didn't bring lease options this year is they still can't get enough vehicles either. Again, the people they already had contracts with. We, we wouldn't be guaranteed a vehicle until two years out. So, the guy, there was no use for us signing a contract.
Okay.
Well, we've already been told we're not going to get the police vehicles, and they're nine months out. We're, we're done with Steve unless you have another question for
I think we're good.
All right, so we can talk about the planning? Same scenario. We sort of talked about the zoning technician.
Steve the talker for planning today?
Yeah, we, we sort of talked about that with the zoning technician, the complaints that come in, the cases. Y'all see the monthly reports. You know, y'all get more emails on that than what we get on those. So, you're seeing what the conditions are. Like I said, we did split the department out, we've gone over it with Steve a few times. Hopefully, we haven't missed anything on that. Try to make sure everything's right. But it's a, a department that I think will be going forward. Wes has got a few people interested. Him and Debbie's continually talking. So, I think we'll have something on that here, hopefully within four to six weeks. But we did, we didn't have any money left over this year, Mr. Martin.
Sorry.
Everything was spent. So, Steve, you did a good job there. Going, going forward, what we tried to do is divide everything in half. But then we started going through, Steve had more vehicles, so we started moving 70% of the fuel back over to Steve. And then we started, you know, fine tuning what we had to, to be able to give them. Transfer capital reserve, we put some money back in there, 7,500, and then we had 7,500 on Steve's side as well. We tried to put enough money in there to be able to buy a vehicle when the vehicle's needed. But that's a number that we started with. It may go to 20, it may, it may level off at 7. It's a, it's a working number for those. Capital outlay, Steve gave one of the trucks away that needed to be purchased so his wouldn't look so bad. But it's the same thing, it's a, it's a vehicle that meets the requirements to be replaced. And then one for the new position of zoning tech. And just like we said before, if the position's not approved, then the equipment, the extra uniform, the extra insurance, the extra, everything would be taken out of the budget at that time, just as we showed you for the fire department.
So, if I may
Yes, sir.
Walk me through the rationale for splitting into two. And what I'd really like to know is how does it make us more efficient, one? Two, are we staff neutral on this? It doesn't appear that we are, we're adding staff. And three, what's the cost? We're increasing our cost by splitting. Am I reading this correctly?
Well, we're increasing the cost because of the two personnel, one in the Steve position, and then one, that's your
Utilization shift is costing us people.
If we would have left it alone
Right.
We're still going to ask for two people.
Okay, what's the rationale for splitting? Because you would have had the personnel cost in either case.
Well, Steve can answer most of it. Talking with Wes on the environment that we have, and planning and element and building inspections and those kind of things, the market looks at, or the individual as a planner looks at his position. His position that we had, Jake and stuff under, they were underneath building inspections. The planner was sort of the secondary person. Wes believes, and talking with others, they believe that needs to be a primary position. Planning needs to be able to handle planning. We've always, like I said, we've always dumped everything into Steve. And planning was one of the things that we added into Steve. And talking with Wes, the separation of these departments makes us more marketable and separates the jobs and duties between the two departments, where they don't, they do still work together and they will continue to work together. The duties of the planner are different than what the duties of the building inspector are. And the duties of the zoning tech's different than building inspectors. So, it defines and lays out a fine line of the duties, responsibilities. And then when the person goes in, they know who to go to, they know who to discuss things with. We're trying to separate things out, make it simpler and easier and more efficient on that side.
So, in terms of attracting a planner in the new setup, Wes's argument is it would be more attractive to candidates. And there'd be a clearer delineation of what's mine, what's yours, in terms of responsibilities. Are we going, therefore going to have to pay the planner more?
Yes. That was already determined earlier on when Wes came and talked about it once before. The job, or the position that we had it sitting in before, I don't remember the number, 27? Whatever the pay grade was. When Wes and Alan talked to us from the cog, they showed us some examples, they showed us the leak analysis and those things like that, and we raised it up to the same pay grade of what Steve would pay. So, that would be an increase there as well.
What's the delta there? What was the change? How much more do we have to pay a planner in the subdivision setup?
The way we had it before, probably around $18,000. I believe, what number? I'll, I'll get the number for you.
And I'm assuming that puts us in the right place in the marketplace?
Yes, sir.
That we're sure of, that's a cog number?
That is why we, before when we advertised it, we had two people apply, seven months.
Okay.
We haven't applied yet, and they've already got a field of eight.
And we're at 75K.
Whatever that number, I didn't look at. 71, 75, somewhere around there.
Yes, sir, 75.
75.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question, actually, back when we were still on the fire department, but I delayed because I, I knew this topic was going to come up repeatedly. And that is new positions in general. I've noticed for every single department that's asking for additional headcount, we're already budgeting merit increases, cost of living increases, Christmas bonuses. I mean, we're already budgeting as if this person is onboard, has been working very well, and deserves a merit increase and a Christmas bonus and a cost of living increase. Is that typical, that we just budget the, all the expense for the position even when we haven't filled it yet? Like, let's say we hire someone in November because we can't find people. Do we start off giving them a merit increase? No, exactly, so we wait until we do a performance evaluation.
They go through a six-month probation period
Right, yep.
And they can be given up to 5%. The effective merit that you see in front of you is figured at 2.5.
Okay.
So, if they got a 5% within that, this number's not going to cover what they got.
Right.
So, just like you said, it is a number in here, but it's probably not going to be enough because they are entitled to a 5% if they're working or we release them or whatever at that time. The COLA, software sticks in there, that's something we can override. They would not get a COLA, they were just hired. So, yes, those number, and I understand what you mean by, it may be a small number, but when you add 60 of them up
Right.
It's a large number.
Exactly.
So, on those, on the personnel, the Christmas bonus, the way the personnel policy reads, if the person comes onboard, yes, they, unless we want to change it, the policy that says if you were hired in the last six months, you don't get one. But right now, if a person came in July 1st or November 1st, the policy's written where they would receive a Christmas bonus.
Okay, so essentially, we split the departments and overall, we're looking at a 27%, roughly 27% increase in a budget request.
That is the two people plus the increase on the planner. As you can see, the operations
Right.
Nothing there.
Yep.
This department, and fires the same way, I mean, and police is the same way. I mean, you buy a car, the rest of it's personnel. I mean, I think Councilman brought that up last week.
It's all about the people. While we're on the subject, just if I may, since we're having so much fun here. The personnel policy, I think that we probably should take a look at that. And I'd be very curious to see how, how merit pay is adjudicated, right? I assume there's a rating sheet from the immediate supervisor?
Yes.
And that goes to, to you, final approval?
I mean, the, all depends how many layers the person's down. Crew leader may be the one doing the evaluation. Then the crew leader gives it to the supervisor, then it goes to the director, then it comes over to HR. Then I get to either make the yay or the nay, or I can decrease it.
So, there's a multi-step process. What, I assume there's a rating sheet or a written evaluation?
There is a, if you get so many satisfactory, if you get so many unsatisfactory, if you get needs to improve, or you get, it goes through a category and it says 10 of these, five of these, nine of these.
15 months of weighted average.
Just for informational purposes, if you wouldn't mind sharing, I think all of council would like to see that, right? Because
First, yeah, the personnel policy, we have finished it, the total review. You'll be looking at it probably, we'll probably give it to you sometime in May, June. You can adopt it in July, sometime like that. But yes, it is a, Leland went through one, so we've been able to work with Leland to get all the latest state mandates, federal mandates and everything inside our new personnel policy. So, that will be something that we'll be changing here in the next few months.
Yeah, I think that's something that council needs to be more familiar with and needs to be aware of how it works. And, you know, there are, I've been in, count them up, five different merit pay systems. So, some deal with ranges, comparative analysis, some require, you know, in, in your Likert score that you have all outstanding, satisfactory, with a lot of different ways to skin the cat. That's, we'll take a look at it.
So far, looking at each, each department
Sorry.
There's a cost of living increase, there's a insurance increase, and 100% of the people get a merit increase. Is that
Not everybody gets the merit. Merit is figured as three, but the effective merit is usually right around 2.3, 2.4, somewhere in there. If somebody comes in and they're only getting 1%, then they go on an improvement plan. And then they're reevaluated after six months.
Well, if they're on an improvement plan, they shouldn't get anything, right?
No, they don't. That's why they may have recommended 1%, but then they get
I mean, the, the numbers are there as a representative speculative budget. But to the point that we clarified, there's fluctuation there because some people may not get a merit increase while others may. These new hires certainly won't be eligible, not necessarily
Won't get a merit, but they'll get a probationary.
Exactly, right, so. But to the point that I think we keep trying to, to emphasize is, we recognize that our people are likely the most important asset, right? Yes, they get equipment and uniforms, and some of them get vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. But it's the person that matters most. And I know it's a very fine line that we try to balance because we want to be competitive. Because when we have a job opening, we want applicants, right? Probably the worst thing for us is to have a job opening and not get any applicants, or the applicants we get are not qualified, right? So, I understand this is an important topic because we want to be competitive in the marketplace to attract talent. But we also aren't, we don't have a very robust budget, right? Yes, we have a revenue stream, yes, it's growing. But we need to manage that delta in the growth and make sure we're putting it in the right places. And certainly, people is, is one of the right places, I feel like, that, that delta should go, right? I, I'd much rather have a talented person join the team versus being able to give them a brand-new 2022 vehicle to drive around in.
I agree.
You know, so.
In looking at the line items, advisory board expenses, $28,300. That's alarming.
I can tell you that was
I, wow.
Good catch here, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
I think it was 2,800.
Well, last year's budget was 500.
I think Bill's going to reduce the budget by $2,500. I hope. $25,000.
Good job, man.
So
There's your test.
Before we, we leave here, one of the other things along with the personnel policy that I'd like to see, and I think my colleagues would like to see, is where we fall in our salary structure in terms of the comparable communities. Because per the point that's been made repeatedly here, the people are, are the essence of this. They're the cost driver. More importantly, they're, they're the ones who make a difference. So, we want to be able to attract them, we also want to be able to retain them. That means sometimes we have to, I know you're not going to like this, Mark, we have to spend more money in that area, right? In order to keep them and recruit the best people. And I'd like to see where we fall against, you know, comparable communities.
So, the county just approved theirs the night before last.
Mm-hmm.
And Steve sent me their finalized pay scales. And the good thing that we saw internally was that we have been doing it ourselves over the last six years. What they just adopted to is our proposed numbers. He has not sent me the job, what goes in each pay grade yet. As soon as I get that, then we'll be able to take that. But I can, I think we've done a good job, and council's done a good job, the 5% that we've done across 3%, not to the salary, but to give a person a benefit if they came here. So, I think we are, we're in the right direction. Next year's police, we've already discussed that, we, we've changed them in the pay grades. So, I, I think we have done a good job with council over the last six years to get us the numbers that are competitive with the county. Now, we just got to make sure our job classifications fall into those same categories.
Right, and you know, from the last four years, what my personal philosophy is. I think, well, maybe councils, I don't know. But I think that we want top talent, we want to recruit them and retain them, and ultimately, we want to put our salary guide in the upper quartile of comparables. That's, that's where people should end up if they're good and they're here after fixed amount of time, like three years. That, they should be there. If we do it any other way, we'll be looking perpetually for police, fire, and so on and so forth.
And I can say right this minute that we have all public utilities, home water, public works, staff onboard. We do not have a vacancy right this moment, except in the par three golf course. And there's one position there, so everything's full going into the season.
Right.
Except for Steve's.
My philosophy applies to you as well, especially to you, or your position, not to you personally, and to you. I mean, I think that, again, that's something that, since we have new council members, we need to talk about. But I don't, I don't want to be saving dollars and be missing four policemen. I still want that, and we can't afford it. So, on that issue, I think we're, I hope we're aligned and, you know, we want to be competitive, more than competitive. competitive, more than competitive, we want to be attractive, so we get the best people.
I think after this last adoption, that you'll adopt in June, the pay scales, I think with the changes in departments and stuff that we've added to that, I think that will open up the market. The thing that we didn't have is anywhere from an equipment operator to be promoted, he was there forever, but then we made the heavy equipment operator go. Then the maintenance worker was always maintenance worker, now we have a one, two, and a three. So we've given somebody somewhere to move, and I, and I think that helps. And even with Chris's, we start them out as basic, no, we start them as, yes, basic, then intermediate, then paramedic. And councils before was, well, we only want three paramedics. Well, so then we couldn't promote from within, if Mr. Martin went and got his paramedic license, he'd have to stay a basic person for 10 years, because nobody left. But I, I think what we've done internally is, we're filling those paramedics, because if we're putting the money into Mr. Martin to become a paramedic, I want him to be able to do a paramedic service out in the field. So we've, we've done that, and with council's direction, we've been able to widen our jobs within ourselves.
As Mr. Kelly said, the dilemma that we got into six years ago, to bring a new person in, you had to pay them more than a person who possibly had been here 10 years. And that's, you know, what he started working on, again, each year.
Comforting to hear that, gentlemen. Are we done for the day?
Yes, sir.
We stand in recess, ahead of schedule.
Can we announce the recess? We actually need a motion, I'm sorry.
I'm making a motion.
Until Friday morning at, what time are you coming back?
Nine.
Aren't we supposed to make a decision on this 40,000?
We can do 10 on Friday.
Okay. On Friday.
10 or 9?
10.
We're on schedule.
Had the May council meeting.
Motion from Council Lealock, you seconded it? Everybody in favor?
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.